Good evening and welcome to the San Antonio City Council Meeting of July 8th, 2014. I'd like to thank the Garden Club for the flowers they always provide for our meetings. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Salazar.
Here.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Here.
Mayor Ruane.
Here.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Here.
And Councilmember Iber is excused this evening with notice. Mr. Riegel, will you lead us in the pledge, please? We have a couple of announcements. The regular city council meeting of August 12th, 2014 is canceled. And the beautification task force is accepting nominations for the annual beautification awards program. Applications can be found on the city website and in the city clerk's office. Presentations, there aren't any this evening. Review of the agenda, I have no changes. Any changes? Okay. Approval of the minutes of the special city council meeting of June 24th and regular council meeting of June 24th, 2014. Any errors, corrections, omissions? Seeing none to be approved as submitted. Consent calendar, all items are considered routine or implemented earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested by a council member, citizen, or staff. Any action on the consent?
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion is second on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Get right on to item eight, public hearings. There aren't any public hearings this evening. Item number nine, public comment on items not on this agenda. It is the council's policy to refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation and interaction where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agenda as pursuant to state law. Would anyone like to address the council on public comment? Right into conduct of business, first item A, receive an oral report on the Fourth of July fireworks activities. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My colleague will be here in just a second, but I will start without him. In 2005, the voters passed Measure G, allowing safe and sane fireworks in San Bruno. Allowing safe and sane fireworks in San Bruno increases the volume of activity for police and fire, including on the holiday before and after the holiday. And as you know, safe and sane fireworks is mixed with the use of illegal fireworks. So the use of illegal fireworks and misuse of safe and sane fireworks poses a risk to safety. Because of this risk, each year since that measure passed by the voters, the fire chief and I come up to you when we tell you our plan for what we're going to do for the year. It is our best effort to protect property and damage, to curb the use of illegal fireworks, and to ensure that safe and sane fireworks are used in a safe manner. Our education campaign this year included a safety meeting with all of the fireworks vendors, the nonprofit selling fireworks. We put out an article in Focus. We did several public service announcements with cable to advise the public of the dangers of fireworks. We did an extra media bulletin this year because of the dry conditions to remind people that it was extremely dangerous, fire conditions this year, and also to advise the public of our zero tolerance campaign. This year, we also, and for the police department, we go to neighborhoods where we've experienced problems in the past. We did that again this year, and that is in addition to our pre-Fourth of July enforcement campaign. So over the eight-day reporting period from July, or I'm sorry, from June 28th to July 5th, we had 137 reports of firework violations. Last year during that same time period, we had 128 reports of violations for illegal firework use. On the Fourth of July, we have all of our personnel working except for those on a scheduled 40-hour vacation. And we also brought in 14 officers from Daly City and the San Antonio County Sheriff's Department. We do that to assist us during the peak times. So just to give you an average, Friday night, we average about 100 calls for service. The Fourth of July is our busiest night of the year. It is every year. We had, you're with me here? We had 214 calls for service. 106 of those calls for service were firework-related, and those came in from 8:00 at night to midnight. So that's why we have the additional enforcement help, and that's in addition to our regular patrol staff that we have on. So our teams, we had 30 officers assigned to firework violations, plus we had our regular staff out to handle normal calls for service. This year, we issued nine citations for illegal firework use. The majority of those were on the Fourth of July. We had one of those violations occur on July 5th. Fire Department estimated that we collected about 22 pounds of illegal fireworks. Illegal firework use was throughout the city. There was no one area that was more prevalent than another. And the calls for service, the amount of activity that I observed out there, it seems to be consistent with years past. I think we've got somewhat of a consistent violation pattern, for lack of a better word. We had a lot of violations when the ordinance was first passed by the voters, had a lot of arrests. Those have seemed to taper off, as well as the complaints of illegal use, as well as what we observed. And for the past few years, it seems to be somewhat stable, hovering around that 120 to 130 violations over the five-day reporting period. Again, all of our costs and all of the city's costs that it takes to make sure the city is safe over the Fourth of July holiday, we take those costs and we pass those along to the firework nonprofits so that the city's general fund is not plagued with the costs associated with keeping San Bruno safe for the Fourth of July. So at this point, I'll turn it over to my colleague to cover the fire department portion.
Sure you don't want to do my part, too?
He almost did.
Yeah. Sorry for being late. Because of the heightened awareness related to the drought this year, there was a little extra effort to inform the public on the dangers of fireworks related to the dry terrain within the city. We used a variety of outlets to inform the community. Fire staff worked with the Park and Rec Department to identify over 20 properties before the Fourth of July to assure that we cut those weeds down, and they were done, like I said, prior to the Fourth. Initially, there was a safety meeting and orientation in June with all the organizations requesting permits for fireworks. This year, we decided to outreach to all the schools. We sent over 4,000 flyers that talked about the fireworks-related dangers and also the no tolerance for illegal fireworks. Information was also included in the city's focus publication and on the city's website. The Daily Journal ran an article on the high fire danger and, again, to emphasize the zero tolerance for illegal fireworks. We had public education announcements ran continuously throughout the fireworks campaign on cable television related to firework safety, the effects of the drought, and again, on the emphasis of zero tolerance. The fire marshal conducted daily inspections of all booths from June 28th to July 4th. There was an extra fire engine assigned specifically to San Bruno for fireworks-related calls. And engine company chief officers patrolled the neighborhoods throughout the Fourth of July to deter the use of illegal fireworks. Overall, there was, there's 12 emergency calls on the Fourth of July, four medical calls through investigation, a couple miscellaneous calls for service. One structured fire response was in Daly City, which we provided mutual aid for. San Bruno Engine 51, as well as Truck 51, were there. There were two fire-related calls regarding safe and sane fireworks, a trashcan fire in Lyons Park and a structured fire at Seacliff Way. Both were attributed to improper disposal of safe and sane fireworks. But overall, in regards to fire-related incidents, it was a pretty quiet Fourth of July. And I would like to say that, I would hope to say that it was a tribute to the extra effort by staff to inform the public of the dangers of fireworks and the extra effort that went to, by Park and Rec and police enforcement. So other than that, that's our fireworks Fourth of July report.
Any questions of staff?
I had a question and a comment. On the cleanup aspect, which I know is unrelated to the fire and police, but it being on a Friday and a weekend opposed to weekday, how was the cleanup as far as the next day was concerned?
So Public Works staff did have someone out on the following day for cleanup.
Same as during the week? Was it more than, equal to, less than cleanup? I was just trying to gauge between a weekday where there's a workday the next day and we had a weekend, a long weekend.
I don't have hard data, but anecdotally, I heard that there was some additional cleanup required as a result of improper leaving of materials in the street, but nothing that represents a significant work effort that couldn't have been, that couldn't be adequately handled with the additional service that we provided the next day.
Thank you. And then just my comment, yes, probably, I was allowed to be with the chief as a ride-along, maybe the last ones for Fourth, so took that opportunity. Also, went by the fire station, but also it was on Seacliff, when that structured fire after the department had already arrived. So once again, I want to compliment and thank staff, fire, police, Public Works, Parks and Rec, those that come in, spend their time. Obviously, it is required, but it also takes away from their family and opportunities that they have to do what they need to do. But obviously, the voters have voted the safe and sane fireworks, and it's up to us to try to provide the best safety possible. And it's without them, that would not be possible. So once again, my appreciation and thanks for all the efforts, work, and diligence of staff and our public service and safety.
Good. Thank you very much. You did a good job. Item 10B, adopt a resolution authorizing a city contribution not to exceed $800,000 for construction of the San Bruno grade separation archway.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This is an issue that you've heard about before, that's been in front of the council on a number of different previous occasions. And we're here tonight with what we hope will be the final discussion of, leading to the final completion of the arch, which, as you know, is the signature decorative feature to be added to the now nearly finally completed grade separation and train station structure that is operating well and has provided itself an aesthetic amenity to the community. The archway to be installed on the east side of the grade separation structure is intended to provide a distinctive and special gateway identification, both to announce the grade separation and the train station itself, but more importantly, to announce arrival in the heart of our community, in the downtown, in our transit corridor area. Specifically, the previous discussion that's been had by the city council over a period of approximately almost two years now relates to the design and the cost of this signature decorative feature. And very specifically, I think that the city council will recall that in November of 2012, the city council provided initial approval of a design for this grade separation, for the archway feature that included an internally illuminated and plexiglass-clad archway that would have a green color and would, as I said, be internally illuminated. After a number of months of developing that design, of preciseing that design and preciseing the cost, the city council approved a resolution that signaled its intent to cover 50% of the cost, then estimated at $1.2 million, for the construction of that archway structure. Those costs are to be shared equally with the Caltrain Joint Powers Board, who is the lead agency with respect to the construction of the grade separation structure itself. Subsequently, over a period of design refinement and initial construction cost calculation and coordination with Granite Construction Company, the grade separation contractor, the JPB staff determined and returned to the city council with information identifying that costs as precise for the construction of the arch would unfortunately increase to approximately $1.4 million, again, to be shared 50% with the Caltrain JPB. At that point, the city council asked for an opportunity to review in person, if you will, what this thing would look like and how the cladding and the illumination would be constructed so that you could satisfy yourselves that this was a construction that would produce the intended result, as I indicated, a signature gateway design element to make this community proud not only of the grade separation structure but of the gateway to the downtown. Upon review in late fall of 2013 of the mock-up of that structure, a very small sample, if you will, of what that structure would look like, the city council engaged further discussion about a revision to the design in order to satisfy specific concerns about the integrity, the durability, and the appearance of the arch structure as it was previously envisioned. Those changes were incorporated, and there have been numerous additional conversations between staff and with subcommittee of the city council to refine and precise what that alternative design will look like and how, in particular, to create an appearance that has a sleek and finished profile that, again, will meet the council and the community's expectations. So tonight, we are, I will say unfortunately, here to advise you and to seek your concurrence with the final cost estimate for that structure in the manner that has evolved and that your staff believes most accurately represents your and the community's expectations. And I don't know whether, I have a document that I believe you don't have yet, is that correct? I'd like to ask Bruce if you could distribute this to the city council. And I'll apologize in advance. Ordinarily, I would not deliver this level of detail to you on the deus. We will walk through with you the high points of the cost comparisons that lead us to the action that we're requesting you take tonight. And specifically, I'm going to ask our contract project manager to give you that briefing. Rafael Bolan from the JPB is in the audience and is available to answer any questions. And at this point, again, staff is requesting your final concurrence to the increased cost that is now captured at a total of $1.6 million that represents the design concept that I've just identified and that I would further like to confirm with the city council as to the appearance of the finish. So we'll first go through the cost, and then I'll ask you to take a look at the material boards that we received that represent the finished appearance of the exterior of the arch construction. Again, there's a resolution, it's been prepared, it's part of the packet that asks for your concurrence at a cost to the city not to exceed $800,000, which represents 50% of the cost that is now anticipated and precise for the construction of the arch. And with that, I'll ask Bruce to give us a very high-level assessment of those differences in the, and in particular, why did the, to answer your obvious question, or the question that I anticipate, as to why did the cost increase from $1.4 million, which was the last you heard, to $1.6 million?
Thanks, Connie. Good evening, Mayor, council members. Back in December of 2013, when we had the meetings to decide to delete the internal illumination and go to a solid cladding system around the arch, JPB was commissioned with the idea to come up with a solution that would be a solid version and to keep the cost at the same amount that it was at the $1.4. They'd come up with, the design had external steel cladding that had a lot of expanded joints that would be filled. It also had bolts that would be piecing the parts of the arch together. So there would be a lot of visual obstructions when you were coming into, looking at the arch. You'd see a lot of vertical joints and horizontal, and then there'd be a series of bolts that were, that were holding the different sections together. So after meeting with the subcommittee and then getting back with Caltrain to try and come up with a sleeker, more refined design, they came up with a whole, they changed the cladding, where they would have internal clips holding the different sections of the panels together and the, reduce the joint between the different sections, because it is in a series of sections. So they would be able to put one side on and then the other side, clip it together internally and go through the arch, and you would see a very, a much nicer line. And that seemed to be the direction that the council had given to Caltrain. Due to the fact of now internal bolting and clipping versus putting a lot of external bolts for view, that was a longer lead item, and it just, the cost went up because we were trying to hide any of the, any of the support systems. And there, a small amount of the increase in cost, it's in the structural steel and the cladding was the duration of getting the shop drawings in and going out to procure the material and be able to build it and then bring it on-site. And wanted to make one note, JP, Caltrain, for their part, to try and control costs, they were able to reduce their support costs, and they cut that in half to try to absorb some of the additional costs in the cladding and the structural steel portion. And I think that's kind of the gist of where the large increase in, occurred for the, for the arch.
So I would just simply add, the material that you have in front of you, and again, I apologize for the level of detail that we've delivered to you at this time. Our intent really solely was to show that there has been a thoughtful evaluation and a very vigorous effort on the part, both of staff as well as the JPB, to control costs. And you can see that where certain elements of the previous design, the internal illumination, for example, were deleted as part of the new design, in fact, those costs have been deleted. And as Bruce mentioned just now, there has been an effort on the part of the JPB, and it's granted a relatively small cost in the grander scheme of things, but not an insignificant amount of money that is attributable to the staff support and project management support that's being provided by Caltrain is not being charged to the project as the discussion about the project has continued and the work effort associated with its design development and now hopefully moving to construction, those costs continue to be absorbed by Caltrain. Again, not a huge amount of money in the grander scheme of thing, but, in the grander scheme of things, but I think in evidence that there is, there has been a level of effort and concern that has been devoted to two topics. First is moving this project to a design that provides consensus of the city council at the quality of appearance that the council and the community expect. And secondly, at controlling and containing costs in every possible manner. So with that, staff, our project manager, and Mr. Bolan are available to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions of staff? Michael?
To the chair, thank you. On this, this handout that we got, it shows the structural steel costs, $1.1 million expenditure, says based on actual cost. So can we assume from this that that's already been spent and that part of it is done?
So I believe that the, I'll, you can tell me, tell me if I say it wrong, but I believe that the extra costs are associated with the previous expectation that the work could be done concurrent with the grade separation construction project itself, and as has been represented to the city council on previous occasions, that is no longer, that is no longer possible. So you have a, you have costs of structural steel increasing as well as the time, the costs associated with the time and the need to produce the project as a separate contract change order to be delivered separately from the overall grade separation project.
My question is actually about the green coloring of that block and the legend indicating that it's based on actual cost.
That's based on the contractor's cost proposal.
For the change order.
For the change order. What, what has been procured already is the internal support mechanism that's been fabricated. It's being, it's going to be similar to the other alternative, they're able to use what has already been done, what's the changes, the way the cladding is manufactured and installed.
So if the shading of that block were to actually represent what's actually been expended, what percentage of that block would be lavender versus green?
Was it 45,000?
That's correct. So I can...
Have the microphone.
So the color coding was intended to sort of show increased certainty as the number got more real. So the green is sort of, it's both. There's approximately 45,000 in steel that's actually physically been bought and paid for that we already bent in the city, sitting, ready to go. That's a sunk cost. We've already paid that 45,000. So the rest of it is a projected. The only reason I colored it green is because that's off an actual request for change from Granite Construction. So if no further negotiations took place, that, that's the number Granite would do that work for. So that's why I'm calling it green versus some of the earlier numbers where they were, they were actually my estimated numbers, so obviously, it's not the same level of certainty.
Perfect. And that's what I, that's what I was trying, thank you.
Rico?
Contemplating.
Okay. Irene, anything?
Nothing.
I'm actually torn, and I have been. And I appreciate getting this information. However, I think we know... The cost has increased and I think you've articulated as to why, and I appreciate that. I know folks have been very excited with the completion, with the change, with the safety, with the traffic congestion that's been lessened. And so bluntly, I'm up here wrestling with the continued increased costs and whether or not it really is needed at this point. And I know I was one who supported it at one point. So anyway, to be blunt with you, that's what I'm wrestling with.
Through the chair? When I spoke with the city manager earlier, I had one question about, about the funding. On our side, it's a general fund expenditure on the Caltrain or JPB side. Are those funds pretty much already allocated for this project? Okay. And if we were to not proceed with this, that money would-
...fund it, would it, some other improvement?
Another improvement somewhere else.
Just for the purpose of the viewing audience, the answer was those funds are available and programmed for this project through the JPB, they're 50%, and that were they not expended for this project, for this archway, they would be reprogrammed to something else, presumably not in San Bruno, because there is no more that needs to be done with the, with the grade separation structure itself, or that is substantially complete at this point.
Okay. When the arch is done, assuming we all agree, or the majority of us anyway, who owns the arch?
So the, you guys would own the arch. So we haven't formalized that agreement because we haven't got to the funding portion yet, but yes, the intent was the city of San Bruno would own the arch.
Okay. And where are we with the rest of the amenities on the grade separation? Where's the line drawn between what San Bruno owns and what Caltrain owns?
Right. So if you recall, it would have been 2011, you signed an overall CNM agreement, Construction and Maintenance Agreement, that laid out exactly the responsibilities for who maintains what and who owns what. Upon, of course, that made perfect sense in 2011. It looks like we will have to clarify a few other points more specifically because the devil is in the details on these things, but in general, that agreement is the framework that allocates who's going to maintain what. The short version of it is the grade sap and everything on it is being maintained by JPB and then generally speaking, everything on the, excuse me, a second.
You need to sit down for a little while, that's fine.
No, I apologize. Generally speaking, the stuff that's in the city right of way or on the ground is being maintained by the, by the city. There are exceptions to what I just said.
Okay. So what about the fountain?
The fountain is being maintained by the city.
By the city?
Correct.
Okay. And so that, that formal arrangement will be forthcoming?
As to handoff?
Yeah.
Yes. So to further complicate the matter, our contract with Granite Construction allocates certain periods where the contractor is responsible. So for instance, in the case of the fountain, there's a 30-day period that the contractor had to do the maintenance, at which point it would be handed over to the city. So we're working with staff on that exact handover right now because it's not as clean as just saying on July 30th, everything goes to the city. Obviously, there's, if, if the contractor is maintaining, and I'm assuming that we would allow them to do that at their cost-
They're still maintaining the fountain?
The fountain is one of those items where they are not. So the fountain has reached its 30 days, so that's one of those where they are ready to hand off to the city at this time.
Okay. The city is anticipating also putting a, some artwork on that grade separation. I think you're aware of that, right?
Yes.
All right. And where does that fit in the mix here? Other words, can we just put it up or what?
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Can we just put it up or what?
So if I could, if I could interject here, we've, we've been working closely and cooperatively with the JPB, with Rafael and other staff via our contract project manager and our community services staff to precise where the best location for the mural project is and how that will be installed. In a conversation earlier today with Rafael, he very properly and graciously indicated that there is a desire, I think everybody wishes for the same thing, which is for the appearance of the walls and the, and the various, shall we say, blank areas of the, of the grade separation structure to be improved. And so the JPB is, is more than willing and is working very cooperatively with us to make sure that we find the best location. Now, we're, it is our intent and was our conversation with the City Council previously that it would be installed on city property within the, within the confines of the Posey Park, the relocated Posey Park area, and we're, we're still working with that concept.
We looked at the location just to the south of where the sign is on the stairs going up by the ramp, going on the upper tier, and then possibly having some more on the lower portion where the water feature is, that would be in front of where the benches are. So if you were to be sitting there, you're looking at the tile work, the fountain, and then to your upper left would be the, the other feature.
Good. I would expect that some pretty serious coordination with the artist is going to happen with this too. And the reason I bring this up is not, you know, I know you're going to work this all out, but we've talked before about working a lot of things out with the JPB and there's an awful lot of surprises, a lot of devils in details. And so I just want to make sure we don't have any more going forward. You know, we stood here a number of months ago and we're assured that this was not going to cost any more money. I understand there's been some changes made, but when we go from 1.2 to 1.4, okay, let's, let's get it going. And now we got an extra, in essence, $200,000 or $100,000 each to kick in. So I just want to make sure that, you know, this doesn't keep going on and on. I know, I wish Ken was here because the two of us have been working on this for many, many years.
Right.
And I think it's going to look spectacular. And it's what the group that was put together to work on this grade separation really wants. So I just, I want to make sure there's no more, no more hiccups along the line because they're very expensive.
Yeah, no, I agree.
Okay.
To your point, Mr. Mayor, obviously, the arch, if approved, would be come property of the cities.
Correct.
So to staff, to staff, do we know what type of cost, maintenance? And we obviously had gotten a cost of the fountain, I believe, is about $12,000, if my memory is correct, in addition to the other landscaping, but $12,000 for the fountain. So we had that quantified. Is there, whether it'll be 10 years from now or is it ongoing maintenance? Do we know, have any idea?
Let me chime in on that. I think the, the part of that was discussed and probably has been in the last number of months regarding the cladding that's going to go on this, the archway now. We talked about a, a green type of coating, which in fact, over a period of time, has to be painted or repainted. And, you know, my feeling, and I know Councilmember Iberes is, is a, the aluminum cladding to stand alone the way it is with a light texture to it, so we don't have to worry about real maintenance down the road. It'll do what it's going to do and, and I think it'll weather even as much as aluminum patinas, but we've thought about some of those things, but it's going to be a lot less maintenance-free than what we had talked about before, whether it be a plastic plexiglass or whether it be the, the girder type look, which has to be maintained quite a bit, so.
And there, if you do choose the brushed aluminum, there is a small cost savings for not using, not using the paint.
Right, exactly.
And you reduce your overall future maintenance because the finish is already there.
Right, exactly.
So staff is currently recommending the brushed aluminum appearance that Councilmember O'Connell is holding and displaying right now. There was previous discussion and it is possible, you can see the painted chips, there's three different ones in different shades of green that are all, that paint is applied on the material that will actually be used for the cladding so that you get an actual, you see the color as it, as it will actually appear if it were painted on. What the arch fabricator indicated to the Subcommittee at a meeting a month and a half or about ago was that the lifespan of the painted treatment was approximately 20 years and that presumably at that point, the, this arch would need to be repainted, which could represent a fairly significant cost. Otherwise, to answer your question, as, to elaborate on what the mayor said, is that we're, we're not aware of any ongoing maintenance type treatment that will be required and any costs associated with maintaining the brushed aluminum appearance.
Rafael, given the go-ahead tonight, when can we see the arch in place?
It would take us about 30 days to get shop drawings and then to start reviewing those. So we would begin procuring material in approximately six weeks. They're going to want to fit it up in the shop first before we bring it onsite and figure out it doesn't fit. So realistically, we would be looking, the earliest we could be assembling anything out in the field would be three to four months from the day you decided to give me the go-ahead.
Okay. Any other questions?
Michael? Through the chair, just some, some comments. I know this, this concept predates my tenure on the Council and it's something the community was definitely behind and I think there are some people out there that worked really hard on this that are expecting the arch, but I, I still feel that it's, it's a very expensive and not completely necessary addition to the grade separation. I was probing about the, how much has been spent to date because, I mean, clearly if this had gone a lot faster, I would have felt more compelled to, to stay committed to it had we sunk in more money than what we have. Looks like we're about the 12% mark right now, so I don't think we're past the point of no return on that. You indicated $45,000 for the steel and we have $166,000 invested in the base, so that puts us around 200K.
That's correct, but in addition, the design costs are almost completely expended. So the bottom, almost the la, the third from the bottom column.
So you're saying that the 287,000?
No, I think we're at about 500,000.
Correct.
Costs sunk to date?
Correct.
Total.
Total cost.
Correct. Including soft costs, correct.
Which we split. 250, 250?
Correct.
Yeah, I've, you know, tried really hard to get behind this and I think the current design that's been proposed is far, far more attractive than the original one, but I still don't see us really needing the arch at this point, so. You got, I gotta say, you've done a great job and like I said, the, the design has really come a long way, but I still, still can't see, see fit to get behind it. But thank you.
Okay. Any more questions? Or action by the Council? They're looking for a resolution?
So I'll introduce the resolution? I'll introduce the resolution.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
No.
Vice Mayor Medina?
No.
Mayor Ruane?
Yes. Okay.
So the motion does not pass with a two-to-two vote. If it's the Council's pleasure, we would be happy to bring this item back when there are five council members, so that it could be considered by the, full of the City Council.
I believe that's a good idea.
Through the chair, and I would agree. I do want to echo what Councilmember Salazar said. Mayor Wayne and Councilmember Iberes, who's not here, have done an extraordinary job and a lot of effort and a lot of passion. That was one thing that almost had me with, with an eye because I respect and value all the effort and work they've done. And I do think it is a better arch than we first saw or certainly than we saw the mock-up. So I do want to commend and compliment that and all the work that you and Ken have done.
Thank you. Reported commissions, boards, and committees, there aren't any this evening, comments from council members? I do have one comment. Two days ago, a 57-year-old San Bruno resident was struck and eventually died of his injuries on El Comino Real. I know he was a very frequent visitor to our fire station and I believe our police department also. His name was Bernabe Lactoen. And I just want to say, on behalf of the Council, we'd like to offer our condolences to his family for their loss. Closed session. Prior to the closed session, we are going to go back into study session for just a few minutes to address one item that we weren't able to get to. After that, we're going to close session for two items, public employee performance valuation pursuant to Government Code Section 54957, city attorney, and B, public employee performance valuation pursuant to Government Code Section 54957, city manager. And after that, we will adjourn to the next regular City Council meeting to be held right here in July 22.